Okay, folks, we'll get started. Mayor Poirier is not available. He's at the opening for the County Justice Center, so I'm in the chair today. We'll start by calling a meeting to order, and I'll ask for the blessing and land acknowledgement. And on your program, it says me, but since I'm here, Counselor Koch is going to do that. So Counselor Koch?
As we gather, we recognize that we are on Treaty III lands which are steeped in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations and Métis people today. We continue to be thankful for the partnerships with indigenous people. We give thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in the city of Kenora. We seek wisdom in our minds, cleanness in our thinking, truth in our speaking, and always love in our hearts so that we may try always to unite the citizens of Kenora. Let these principles guide us in our decision-making.
Thanks, Counselor Koch. And carrying on down the agenda, public information notices, and I see we have none. Declaration of pecuniary interest and general nature thereof. I don't think so. Pretend you have any of the following items on today's agenda or from a meeting at which a member was not in attendance. Do we have anybody with pecuniary interest? Seeing none, we'll get into the agenda. So number one on the subject here is municipal accommodation tax review. So I'll turn that over to Stace or...
That'd be me.
Okay, yours.
Thanks. Good afternoon, Council. I know that as part of your orientation process, Kyle would have walked you through a fairly extensive deck on MAT, so my goal is not to repeat things that he said there, but I do want to touch on a couple of things that relates to MAT because MAT is often confused by the ratepayers that when we do these projects, that it's actually tax levy that is going to these projects when in fact it is MAT. Okay? So what is the municipal accommodation tax affectionately known as MAT? It is a tax that is levied on hotel rooms, motel rooms and bed and breakfasts in Kenora. So on every bill, people that are staying at those places will get a 4% levy, which is called the municipal accommodation tax. That revenue is collected from these organizations. It comes back to our finance department, and you know, we do great work in the economic development and tourism space with this revenue. It was funded initially or it started initially in Q4 of 2018. And in early 2019, when I started here, it was new. And it was a good thing for the city because historically, economic development and tourism was really grossly underfunded. So now we had this new revenue source. And what we did in 2019, at that time, we had the Economic Development Commission. There was three council representatives on that board, and then we had Counselor Chase and Counselor Koch and a few others were on that board. We had a planning session, very similar to what we're going to do today. And with that, we sort of started with what we thought was going to be our budget. We took a conservative estimate, and we started to talk about projects that we thought that would be good in terms of advancing both tourism and economic development in Kenora. So we're actually going to be going through a very similar exercise today because it works very well. Just a few couple of highlights. So we started, as I said, in 2018. Since that time, net of our contribution to Kenora Hospitality Alliance, the city would have received approximately $1.2 million over that period of time. For this year, net of the KHA expense, we anticipate that we have a budget of approximately $700,000. And we've again always taken a very conservative approach to things. Looking into 2023 and prior to coming to council, we had a planning session like we would have every other year. We had invited all members of the KHA, Kenora Hospitality Alliance, to be part of that planning session. They sent their senior person to sort of be the voice of that group. Before you on the walls are all of the objectives in the five-year economic development and tourism strategy. Again, we started this in 2018. We didn't have that plan back then, and we published that plan in June of 2021, sorry. So as we go through this exercise today, I put these here because it's very important that the projects kind of land in one of these areas. So you're actually going to be asked to do that. And when we did our planning session, not to get into the real granular details, but I can do it at a high level in terms of where we've got projects right now and approximate budgets that we have for them. And then, of course, we're going to take your input today, and then we're going to see how it shakes out and how we can cluster things, and then we'll come back to council with this sort of an overview of what we would suggest in the various areas and what the spends should be. So in terms of the objective of the enhanced four-season experience, we've got approximately $100,000 contribution, 50 going to Mount Evergreen and 50 going to the lighting of the Nordic Trails. Why that money is important to those organizations is they can take that money and they can lever it. So when they go to NOHFC or another funding organization, they get multiples upon art contributions. We also have $20,000 allocated to Science North so that we can bring back some of their traveling road exhibits. Under supporting Kenora's development as a destination for arts, culture, and heritage, Josh and I are meeting with Mew staff later this week to talk about their strategic plan, their embedded objective within that strategic plan to enhance their marketing and what we can do to support them. So we don't have a number there yet, but it's one of the things that we're going to do. Another one of the objectives is to improve lake access use and boating infrastructure through our success with NOHFC. We've got $2.28 million going into two projects, the parking lot at the rec center and all the docking projects. In addition, we would be funding the Coney Island Shuttle. Under the objective of advancing Kenora's position as a host community for special events, this is something that we started last year. So we have a $25,000 reserve built as of last year, and the goal is to contribute to that again this year through the MAT tax. And what that allows us to do is develop a kitty so that we can kind of buy events that we can have here, and we would do those targeted at the shoulder season. Terms of the objective of activating development of Kenora's vacant land and underutilized lands, we've got a $30,000 contribution earmarked towards the investment attraction project, reminding council that if successful, that would be a $300,000 project for the economic development space.
Stace, can you pause your first side?
Sure.
Counselor Moncrief had a question?
I'm sorry?
The lake access $2.28 million, you didn't say what the contribution was from the MAT tax.
There was actually nothing from the MAT tax other than the Coney Island Shuttle as part of that.
Okay.
Good, Counselor? Good there, Counselor Moncrief?
Yeah, thanks.
Carry on, Chase or Stace.
No, it's okay. Under the investment attraction category, support the growth and retention of local business in emerging sector, we've got allocations in 2023 related to Keep It in Kenora program, the open streets market, and a housing forum as well. Under the objective of tourism and economic foundations, the objective is support indigenous partnerships and tourism and economic investment in Kenora. We've got $15,000 allocated towards undertaking a developing programming and bringing it to Kenora to expose local residents and tourists to indigenous content. And finally, oh, no, there's two more, undertaking planning activities that support tourism and economic development. We've got $85,000 allocated towards various marketing campaigns to bring new people or have people come back to Kenora. And then again, that investment attraction project. And finally, develop and invest in infrastructure that supports economic growth and tourism. We've got approximately $100,000 into a number of different projects, which include a new rink for the White Cap. We've got a contribution towards the Pocket Park. We've got some work to be completed at McLeod Park, additional Christmas lighting, a travel stop at the Discovery Center, and an expansion of the disc golf from nine holes to 18 holes as that's going to be part of the Manitoure Disc Golf program or tour, I guess. So another question here. Stace? Sure.
Counselor Moncrief?
So all of these are listed under 2020, most of them under 2022 projects. So is this...
These are all projects that we would have identified for 2023. So here's, we're going to go through the exercise with council today. So these are just earmarked right now. So we did this planning session with KHA. We looked at a bunch of different projects that we might want to bring forward in 2023. This is a summary of what that shortlist is right now. We're going to do this planning session with council today, and we're going to take that all back, and then we're going to meld that information together, and then we're going to come back to council with what we would suggest for 2023.
So we were given a list that's called MAT Projects 2022 with what was budgeted for them in 2022, and some of these are listed. I'm just trying to figure out what we're doing here.
Some of them carry into subsequent years just because of the type of project that they would be. So that came in the package that came from Kyle, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, okay, so there's a whole bunch of those projects that were 2022, some of them completed, some of them didn't, some of them will carry into 2023. A perfect example would be the event attraction thing. It's a multi-year contribution, no different than what we did with the automated washroom we purchased. We put it in a couple of years to minimize the financial sting of doing it in any one year.
Great.
Okay. So in terms of our agenda today, just, we just went through the introduction, talked about some of the stuff that we're going to be doing in 2023 with council's blessing. You were asked to do some homework, okay, which was to identify three or four projects that you thought were important. What I'd like you to do right now is to take that worksheet that you would have completed and just fill out what those projects are on individual stickies.
I don't know what you're...
Counselor Koch.
I don't have any homework.
Okay. Everybody got homework on?
December.
Oh, at Christmas.
Oh, enough. I agree with Counselor. Counselor Koch.
Well, we can take some time.
Sorry.
So...
It's okay, guys. I got projects. I've got some money.
So maybe what we can do right now is for those of you who have done your homework, feel like a teacher, take your projects and put them on the big stickies. One project per sticky, okay? And then for those of you that have not done projects, have a look at these categories and identify three or four projects that you think are going to advance economic development or tourism in Kenora. And what we're going to do is we're just going to kind of place them on the objectives to make sure that they line up. And then we're going to have you come up and present their projects. So that way, like, we have things in our mind in terms of what we're thinking, but sometimes we articulate it a little more clearer so somebody will go, "Oh, I'll get it." And then after that, we're going to have an open forum where we ask questions and that sort of thing. And then we're going to do a voting exercise to help us prioritize. So take 15 minutes right now to either transfer your projects or to write projects which you think might enhance things here.
Okay, is everybody good with that? Any questions or...
Okay. And happy to answer questions at any time.
Sorry for being jolinked.
That's okay.
This isn't, you know, this is almost from over...
Yeah, yeah.
So the message is just, these are straight out of the chart.
Yeah.
Tourism.
Well, we should have been in the calendar.
No, not that, but if it's just in the calendar...
I mean, I get around, I'll print it, but I gotta...
What do you need? What do you...
Will it print on that?
You should have printed. I don't know if you have that.
Just forward it to me, I'll print it.
Like, what are you trying to print, the homework?
Yeah.
None of that is...
I could have sent it earlier. Not just... Budget.
Yeah, it's okay.
It doesn't explain that. So there's no way for us to know. That's all we know.
Correct.
So it looks like this is what you did in 2022, we're starting with this. So that's what my confusion was, and this is where...
Did you send this one?
Where do I get it?
This is 2023 MAT. This is not a MAT project, this is a perfect MAT.
So that's what I need.
Here? I can imagine.
Because this is the...
Yes.
Just look for...
I should have asked an auditor. I just wanted that for that name.
Just give it a...
Yeah.
Yeah, so these are just the projects that we identified. Some of them might be... They might not be together, they might be... I'm usually the one helping. I feel badly.
I should have sent out a reminder so that those objectives were...
I could have given myself a reminder.
This was clearly, please get this done before Christmas, you know?
Okay.
Show me your... Come on, I feel a little bit, if you don't want me to get here.
That might be easier to come and walk around like...
You're in bed right now?
Kind of sort of Bernie's doing. Is there anything like money?
Yes.
Yeah. You maybe need to start thinking about my next idea. Ah, drive me a river.
Three or four projects.
That's a good one.
There's not going to be a way where you can... There's 55 projects already on the list.
Nothing in store. Nothing's in store.
Right, sure. Thanks. This is a meaningful document, Josh. Okay, now what's the color coding?
So we'll explain that once. Just let me get it more out of here.
Some of us are still doing our homework, Lisa. Got to wait.
Did you send it? Is it from you?
Yeah, I just ordered it.
Oh, did you? Okay, good.
When I get a flight, sometimes I get a new box of stuff, so just give me a second. I can see it's in the airbox results. I don't want to. I'm gonna probably get...
I got it now.
Better get that card there.
Hi, Andrew.
It's Josh. Hey. Still going strong over there.
Oh, my God.
Go up there.
How's it looking there?
How many copies do you want?
I guess just do seven.
These are the blue.
I love them.
Oh, sure. Sure. Wait for everyone.
Okay.
I think everybody missed one or two.
If everybody wants to pause for a second, Beacon was just going to explain something.
Yes, so there's a bunch of colors on the sheet. So as Stace mentioned, the 2023 MAT projects are a result of a similar planning session that we would have done with our internal staff group. So this is the shortlist that we've come up with. The first four that you see at the top, starting with annual marketing allocation, those are ones that are typically allocated every year. So those are annual contributions that we identified. Please ignore the blue beside annual marketing allocation, that shouldn't be blue. But the three that are highlighted blue below, those ones are like partnership contributions. So those are going towards larger projects, those are flow-through contributions. The projects that are identified in orange are things that we really need to do, like we have commitments to moving ahead with these small pieces in 2023. And then the three that are highlighted in yellow, when we went through this planning session, we came up with a big list of projects. We identified quite a number of different strategies or different plans. And so part of the conversation that we had at a very high level was like, how much capacity do we have internally to do all of these things? And so the three that are highlighted in yellow are the ones where we were like, these are really great, we love these projects, but we just don't know if we have the capacity to deliver them in 2023 alongside everything else. So that is what the yellow bars mean.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we kept every single project on the list. We wanted to keep them off. So this would have been the shortlist that the city staff and KHA came up with collectively back in October.
Great, thanks. So Coney Island Shuttle is... Brown's was committed.
Yeah, it's an annual, an annual thing, it was a four-year contract.
Brown is committed.
Orange. Yeah. Great, thanks. You said $700,000, but in fact, it says $850,000 here. So what's the difference? Did we just find...
So we annually have to contribute $143, roughly 140. It depends on a 10-year rolling average of Kenora Hospitality Alliance? So they were existing destination marketing organization priorities?
Yeah.
Yeah, so basically, we have to make them whole, and then the remaining MAT comes back to the city of Kenora.
Okay, so it's not $850,000?
It's not $850,000. So that's the starting odds, and then we have, you can see there's an expensive $143 in KHA. So it's roughly $700,000.
Thanks.
There you go. There you go. That meant what?
They were projects that we identified that people thought were a priority, but we just didn't know we would have staff capacity to deliver.
Okay.
So they're on the list, but there's no...
So if they're on the list, they're going to stay on the list?
Yeah.
Yeah, and this list too is just very much in draft, like, these were all of the ones that we came up with, so very much...
Okay. So when you're ready, if you want to just place your ideas, your projects, in the objective category where it fits?
What does trail counters mean?
Those are counters that we use to, it actually counts if somebody goes by, yeah, it's a traffic.
Thank you.
So I think, Counsel, a very, a questionable to tennis courts and number of people using the tennis courts.
Oh, yeah.
We could utilize something like that to monitor the gate to track, for the people. It's very portable.
And where's that here?
It's trail counters.
Gotcha. Good. To answer your question, Counselor Moncrief, about finding some money, we actually did because, again, when we would have gone through this exercise in 2022, we would have assumed a certain amount of revenue, or revenue was actually higher than what we would have thought. So that's two things. Number one, you have a carry-forward balance that comes into 2023, plus you know that your revenue is going to be higher in 2023 because of your training in 2022, which had some COVID in it, right? So...
Right, so even with the clearing off, like...
So two things.
I love this whole...
Yeah, so two things. The hotels increased their rates and the volume started to come back as well. So it's worked in our favor.
How many ideas are there? Well, no, I don't know. These are their ideas. Now, if you have ideas, you lump them into the appropriate objective, I guess.
Okay. Yeah, maybe they're picked up on some of the other projects that we're already identifying.
One looks like...
More than two up there.
What, four?
As many as you want.
Careful.
All the ages are in the basket.
You all in? We should try to limit the ideas to four, just to be fair to everyone, otherwise, up to four.
Who doesn't have four?
It's not quantity, it's quality.
Go run around the building and come back outside.
Take a couple of hals.
No, I didn't. And I couldn't get any really talking today. He's my new buddy. One category's got no love there. I see that. It's really the role of the Northwestern Business Center as well as economic development in that category, so as long as we're resources. Everybody split up their stickies? Okay, well, looking for a volunteer to go first and explain their project to the group. I guess we can take some notes in terms of the idea to make sure that we're capturing it properly, but who would like to go first? Okay, Counselor Manson, you're up.
I can support indigenous participation in tourism and economic development, and I specifically put Coney Island on there. I think there's lots that we can do with that trail specific to indigenous people. So that's the basics of it.
What would you like to see there?
What do I envision?
Yeah.
I envision a more natural way of signage. I envision maybe a roundhouse. I envision Indian artifacts put out in display somehow.
Okay, so clearly that would be a big undertaking. It would be a multi-year undertaking.
Yep.
Partnerships would be very important to that.
That's why I put it there.
Okay, good. Do you have other ones that you wanted to speak to?
I put a host city for special events, I hope you could do a job there.
Okay, so one of the things that we've done in 2022 was we started a contribution to attract big events because, let's just to use an example, the Still Chainsaw event, big day, big event, multi-day event, off-season event. It costs money to attract these things. So we had $25,000, 2022, additional proposing $25,000 in 2023 for that same thing.
Yeah, that's what I see, an off-season event, maybe something push-whacker related.
Yeah, like a festival type thing.
Kind of like that, yeah.
Yeah.
I know one time Counsel came up with a vet neck something, and they even talked about the lids of toilet plugs.
There was one, I think it was, was it called...
I think if you made it a fun event and make sure how you worded things, I think it could be a great event.
There's one municipality that does an Elvis Week, and it's too full. They have impersonators, it's, the whole week is built around Elvis.
Yeah, I mean, so what do we have that we can do if we're...
Yep.
I think one year we did, didn't we do an outhouse parade or something? People decorated outhouses? I mean, there's all kinds of things you can do, just those...
I mean, redneck. Fishing shops, there's a lot of fishing shops.
Yeah, yeah.
You can decorate your fish shop.
Good. Barry?
Destinations are culture and heritage, just increase activity and awareness. I still think make whole missing for indigenous. And a museum does a great job, but I think we can do more. We used to have outdoor displays along the Harbor Front. Think if we did some kind of an indigenous related, that would be great.
Yeah, they have a lot of content, it's just about getting more people aware of it. And when we did the tourism strategy, they rated it like 11 or top 10 people come to Kenora. So it's about getting that word out there.
Holiday lighting.
Okay.
I think we're losing the battle on that one.
Well, actually, this is the first year that we really started it in earnest. How much did we spend on holiday lighting this year? Well, actually, this is the first year that we really started it in earnest, how much did we spend on holiday lighting this year?
We spent.
Thirty-eight thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars.
Okay, and then we proposed another twenty thousand for next year as well, or this year, sorry, so we're moving in the right direction because that's almost sixty thousand dollars lighting in two years, so that's.
Downtown still didn't look festive enough in light books, the way we used to do downtown, the other thing is, initially we brought up the idea of a light trail, you drive and there's light stuck around, it was kind of what we started at the harbor front and then it kind of died away. And on the green belt, people missed the stuff on the green belt, and I know it's a pain in the ass to do.
Yeah, one of the one of the things that happened was through the downtown revitalizations, you'll notice that there's pedestals, electrical pedestals. So for us to even do the lights this year, how many of those pedestals did we have to replace? Was it thirty to forty? Yeah, so it was a big undertaking just to get ready to do that, so you need power there, which can be a challenge.
We're better drivers.
Thank you very much, councillor, who would like to go next? Councillor Chase.
Go grab, alright.
A little too much sugar? Uh, this first project that I wanted to support was a downtown border for snowmobiles. So studying that signal viable, that is, I think there's a big opportunity for our tourism in the winter seasons, according to. If you're familiar with the trail, the trail does not go through the city, goes around the city, and there's a lot of like opportunity to come to Kenora to visit our restaurants and hotels. And I think it would be a very good thing to enhance that business.
Can I ask the question? So would you see them coming in by the marina in Cameron Bay and then coming the back way through? Because you can come to the lakeside, but you can't come through the backside.
I don't know how to get over the water.
Well, there would be two bridges required, and while we actually have the old bridge that went to the top of the pavilion in storage right now.
But I asked about that a long time ago, and someone said it had been disassembled.
Well, it's cut into pieces, you can always weld that together, right? Yeah.
Specifically for that question, I asked where it was, that's interesting, huh?
It exists.
Um, the next idea I had was about activating developing underutilized or vacant lands, so the piece that speaks to me the most is municipally known, as referred to as the Highway to Heaven piece in Kuwaiton, it's quite a large acreage on the west boundary sort of between Kuwaiton and Ford Road. It also has a bit of a right-of-way or strip of land that goes down to the water, so it does touch the lake and could be an access point for development. In terms of uses or ideas there, obviously a higher and better use is probably something commercial in the in the hotel space or perhaps something a little lower budget capital, whereas from the private sector would be maybe a new RV park, a private sector RV park of some kind. I think if there are changes to be made at the Shenabti Park, that there's still a lot of demand and usefulness of having a good campground and RV site. And that area is forested, it's sort of off the highway, you don't get a lot of noise because it's elevation and the views of the lake from there are unreal. And you have access off Mackenzie Ford Road, Fire Room Two, you get to it, so you have sort of an air and out, so that's just an idea. And if we were ever looking at bringing services down the west quarter of our highway, it might be a natural spot, I got some services for sure, water along the way to develop. So just a way to create some. And that sort of left me going to expanding Shenabti Park, and when I look at the amount of land that's there, I I know in terms of serviced RV sites that have enough power to run air conditioning and some of the bigger motorhome style tour buses, there's not a lot of spots at Nish, there's a huge campground along Blue Lake that's not on the water, I think there's a market for that. I think there's a lot of people that end up parking illegally against our bylaws at the Walmart parking lot, that if they could, they would like to be at a niche, but there's no hookups or it's full because we're always at capacity. So I think studying, looking at, again, it's not something that we operate, we have a third-party operator, but if it fits into their business model and it's it's viable, it might be worthwhile investing in expanding that part or that service or changing the location to Highway Heaven. And then the other project I had, and this is something we talked about during the two thousand eighteen map review when we were commissioned, we're developing and investing in infrastructure that supports economic growth, is that like there to be a study done to put a boat lift or a lock system between the lake and the river, I think that a long time, that's a huge capital expense, there's obviously ongoing operating, we need to start running that type of a piece of infrastructure, but it would enhance the values on One Pet River, assessments would go up, property taxes potentially go up, and it just connects that to those two bodies of water, which historically used to be connected and aren't anymore. And I think as an asset, to show off how unique this area is, again, I'm still a big voting guy, you know, we're not the voting destination anymore, but it is still something that I believe in, and I think a lot of people obviously come from all around the world to experience here, that would enhance enhancing value to us.
Thank you, Heather, do you have a copy of the submissions that would have come in like a decade ago when they were looking at options for the the old boat lift?
I don't know if we would still have that, I think we would have destroyed it. I can look at all those records and a scan, but I've just never seen anything like that.
I'd just be curious, it seemed to me that there was a tender process that went out where they asked the private sector to come forward with different ideas.
It was very costly, I don't even, I just remember that.
Yeah. Um, thank you very much. Very, very different.
Well, I designed for, because I did do my homework and I just wanted to know the way I'm middle, so I don't know. Okay, so I did for sport indigenous participation in tourism, there's an organization called Indigenous Tourism Ontario, the city of Thunder Bay is a member of them. I think this is something we should look into, they are, let me read out their website so I see. Province's first and only dedicated indigenous tourism organization, organization that focuses on uniting communities, indigenous organizations and industry leaders to support the growth of haunted indigenous tourism, so I'm sure there could be some resources in there that maybe we could co-utilize. Um, and then I had under development and arts, I think there is an opportunity, I'm not sure in regards to some of our mural situations around town, what the history was with them, I think there's an opportunity for everyone's history to be represented in them, if there is, I mean, I actually, these are private businesses, so I'm not really sure what the feasibility is of that, but making sure that we are telling everyone's history when we're telling the history of Kenora. And these are just two small ones for enhancing four-season visitor, I think that Mount Evergreen could be used as a year-round destination and Kimberly, which is in the Rocky Mountains where I grew up, we have a big mountain biking club that they use to see Hill Four in the in the summer months and it's like huge year-round tourism for that destination, and then I thought like a dedicated sledding hill because, but anyways, I don't know, I kind of felt like the hill from King George down to the rec center or something, I always get people asking me with their kids, like, where do you go sledding? And there's sort of a hill like by the Baptist church, but parking's kind of a datey there, and I don't think it's actually an official thing, but I thought maybe having an actual dedicated sledding hill, so that's it.
Thank you.
I'm sure there's more.
You guys, you guys get to do this four times, if you think of an idea after you leave, just email it in and we'll we'll make sure we share. Can you add murals to the list because we had that on the list a couple of years ago?
So there is a mural on this one.
Okay, councillor Moncrief?
I just have one, it's on the water, like, what level is that? Late access, blah blah blah, takeover and rehab the Thatcher Road boat launch on Black Sturgeon.
Is that privately owned right now?
Nope, Emma Earl's, they want to get rid of it, they're not maintaining it, the Black Sturgeon property owners maintain it with a volunteer group that goes there once a year to cut the brush along sides of the road and throw down some gravel that they buy as cheap as their bag ore or steel and it's in great shape, the launch itself is in great shape, the road needs a bit of work, but it would allow for a public access to Black Sturgeon for day trippers and cottagers who need to launch their boat to get it through.
It's really like the only public access point, it's not signed, like it's very difficult for people to find.
It's hard to navigate.
Yeah, that's gonna be my question, so we don't have any city facilitated boat launch on Black Sturgeon?
You have tons of property that's underused or not used, they have property as part of subdivisions, they have to turn over lots on every subdivision, but that one's already developed, it's already boat launch, and Kenora doesn't want it anymore, they don't want any part of it. There's parking, everything's there, there's parking.
Fifty.
There's parking and there's lots of space once you get down there, but getting down there's a challenge, and it would mean a lot to anyone who works in the bypass.
Even even the islanders and people of water access property does not like struggle to find the lake.
It's a quick win.
Yeah.
And in-town people, like I've launched kayaks there and there's no real other spot to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, I like that one. You have a bonus.
I'm more than four.
I only have two up here already, eat it, okay, oh, that's public meeting, okay. I'm gonna say this, but it's already happened, that was just social community art, the indigenous piece, I'd like, we really want to paint our crosswalks, that'd be nice, and, well, yeah, that's pretty like, we did the community art justice center one, and it's beautiful. And just like installations, kind of like we did the monkeys on paint, those kinds of things, I think would be nice to do again, and kind of in an ongoing way. Now, I almost spun onto my other one, which is a sort of a brainchild of RCA, although he's giving me the props for it. It's an arts and culture master plan. Because I think all of the stuff kind of, like all the stuff we're talking about is kind of linked into it in a lot of ways. I know that there's an appetite from LoAC, arts groups in the community who are asking for this kind of stuff, they want to know, like, I mean, you may have read, one of the questions in the campaign period was, what are councillor's thoughts on making our city more arts-friendly? And I forget what all the responses were, but I just think it would be a good tool for for future planning, worth some time and energy looking into that, so that it's always something we focus on.
Good, thank you, Kyle had come up with an idea before, which was, there's a city in Japan or something where they paint the manhole covers?
Yeah.
Is that what it was? Very impressive artwork.
They also have to paint all of our fire hydrants like little tarry people in Kimberly.
That's funny.
We say they're trashy, I haven't stashed it. Where are the tacky police? Come on, people, this is more.
I had one thing, sorry for just any of the art pieces, that if we're gonna do any indigenous art pieces, we should be doing them in consultation.
Absolutely.
Like it has to be done.
Yeah, just so you know, everything that we do, like if we're looking at translations and things like that, and the peace park is a perfect example, where we're making sure that we're getting local engagement for that, to make sure that we're actually translating proper properly, because different communities have very different dialects, so we just want to make sure that we're capturing it properly, go ahead.
The, I know we talked about it before, but the pieces that were on the bridge.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know the ones, we still have them, I don't know where that left off.
It was with Lori Nelson and her indigenous committee, advisory committee that was through the museum, so that happened right before COVID and then they were meeting regularly and having regular meetings and then.
Yeah, maybe we'll pause that discussion, I know that it was part of the potential cloud park.
So we had talked, we had done the community survey and then we had spoken with Lori, I think she talked with her group, and then the next piece was to meet with the individual communities to do additional engagement or have conversations on that, and then that was right before COVID, so.
Hold on, hold. Am I running it or?
You are.
Well, go ahead.
Yeah, councillor or mayor.
We're an open and secure.
Might not be the best time, but I was wondering what an update on our indigenous advisor, has that been filled or?
We can't speak about that, Heather, can you provide a high level, it has not been filled efficiently?
The candidate is.
Are we going in camera?
Still, yeah, they're just still considering the role.
Okay, I can provide, I can provide a fuller update on Wednesday, please. Okay, whoever would like to go next? Councillor Brian there?
Go ahead.
Or Porter?
I've been saying for three hours, so.
Yeah, okay.
Say another half an hour.
These are like not in particular, I guess my number one here, I put the downtown ambassador program.
Yeah.
Just because I think, I think there was a shot at it last year, I don't know how successful it was, but I I just really think that that can be a big piece of our downtown success, and I look at the, it's very different. When the police have a cadet program, they're clearly identified in uniforms, they have certain authorities, we wouldn't have that. Nonetheless, I think you could, if you got the right demographic for, like I think a lot of police foundations, students, maybe sociology students, give them a, dress them professionally, the type of the uniform with specific training, specific roles, you could even, you know, you could even have, I'm sure our community police officers could give them some, some pointers, some directions, some, you know, do some training for them, I think that would have a big impact, and I, and secondly, keeping with that, I mentioned open air street markets. I I've worked, I did, I actually worked all of the markets from Main Street to Scully, and it was very successful. I think that what I got was there was an appetite to do it more often, and even include two blocks of not only Main Street but block in front of Boston Pizza, like the whole downtown area, I thought it was, it had lots of potential. And I guess when I talk about the downtown ambassador program, people, you know, I was working and people were coming up like boat and they were being harassed by people down at the harbor front, you know, being harassed for money, I think basically our home had a cooling station set up down at the harbor front and it was full of a bunch of drunk people that I tried to arrest a few of them because they're politically intoxicated. So we had this dynamic where you had this great event happening downtown, and then you had this counterproductive thing happening at the harbor front and they really, you know, super, they didn't talk to each other at all, so I thought if you had an ambassador, you know, program where people could, you know, escort people out or just be a presence in the downtown, I thought tourism would fit well. But I had a lot of, I got a lot of feedback about the open air markets, how successful they were, and people that were hoping that they would be expanded more, so I put those two together, and I did put it up here, I will after, but I said a Hanny Pen Lane beautification project. I've said this before a couple of times, when Jeff Port was here, I mentioned that, his eyes kind of lit up, he said even from a planning point of view, planner's point of view, I've talked to, I brought this up at the biz, and I've also brought it up to the detachment, and I know Staff Sergeant Jim Neeld said, it's not a beautification project, but he said that the OBP want to take over Hanny Pen Lane, they want to own that, because historically it's been, you know, it's been a catalyst for all kinds of wild crime, drug dealing, it's really in our downtown core, so if we can, we can expand kind of the ownership of that, and again, that's, keeping with the concept of septic, it's it's a theory of ownership, so if we can do that, and we can call it a beautification project, call it what you want, just try and reclaim Hanny Pen Lane. And then I agree with councillor Chase about the the snowmobile strategy in the downtown corridor. I was involved in that with commercial police, I did a snowmobile control, councillor Moncrief, we talked a lot about the down corridor through down and how that would look, because of the dangerous ice conditions, you have to have a bridge of some sort, it's not beyond the realm of possibility, but it would take some efforts and some some funding and a will to do it, but.
Any public private partnership would be great for that.
But keep, there's a lot of elements at play there because, you know, snowmobiles are loud and you get kids driving with, you know, with cans or whatever, mufflers, you're gonna get complaints from in residential areas, so just be prepared to navigate all those issues when you when you look at a downtown corridor. I agree with councillor Chase, I think the benefits will really weigh any risk, and I think it's a, it's a market that really, it's on top here in Kenora, I think it's got pretty potential, especially with Mount Etoile Beach so close, you know, the US. So those are my main ones, I mentioned, you know, the trail counters, that's kind of a throw-in, it's three thousand dollars, but I really believe in data informing, informing our project and strategies, so I think that that could have a, that could have value. But those are kind of my main ones, I think, yeah, I'd really like to see the downtown ambassador program. You know, reimagined in some way, and as I said, we can draw partnerships with police service or cross training, and I've done, I guess I've done, I guess I've done some of those situational awareness training, Google. Uh, um, like, uh, opportunities with the city, so I can even train those ambassadors and that type thing. They don't, they don't have to be cadets, so to speak, but they can just train them with some, like, mockup around.
Yeah, so Councillor Bernie, just wanna, you know, like, we haven't lost any ambassador program. The big issue we, and we're gonna give a presentation of this on council. I, I think it's important, we, we sit down and take a step back and say, like, if you recall, the, um, the group down in the harbor front sort of provided notice. And so, we sort of tried to recoup that money from the contract with the, um, Harbor Town laborers and put that back into the program. And maybe we could have made different choices or tried things differently or invested a little bit differently. And so, we wanna have a conversation with council about sort of how we envision the program and maybe some options, including, you know, cadets or auxiliary officers and some of those types of things that are available to us. Um, I just want you to know, we haven't lost sight of that. We kind of have three arms of, you know, the ambassador program. And the big one that last year we had the issue with was sort of around tourism and the lack of staff.
Yeah.
We, we could not get staff. So, we're hoping better story there this year, but I just want you to know, presentation coming to council. We have no loss of that. And we do think that it's important, so that is on the radar.
Yeah, I'm not being critical of the way it was, you know, because there's various reasons. As you said, just finding staff was difficult, various reasons. I, I just think it's, it's great that we're gonna reimagine it and look at it again, so, great.
And that, um, labor cost for the ambassador program is built into the 2023 operating budget. So, the placeholders there, and HR has started, um, their recruiting, uh, early this year, in January. So, to try and get ahead of things. And we're even going out and reaching out to the various cottage associations, because of course, we'll have kids and grandkids that will be coming out and wanting to work here for the summer. So, we're doing what we can to really spread the word and get as many people, uh, engaged as possible.
Go ahead.
I think Councillor Bernie's point shouldn't be lost, though, if it was targeted, the stra-, the, uh, job ads were targeted to people with some knowledge or experience in dealing with, you know, the certain situations that they might, may come up with. I think with these strategic, more strategic than putting somebody in use.
Yeah.
Just thinks it's about chatting people up on the street.
Yeah. And HR has that lens for sure when they're looking at recruiting. You're up.
Well, first of all, thanks for the opportunity to do this, because I, I know for a long years, um, when we talked about, like, the municipal accommodation act, we wanted to keep politics open and have staff come back with some. Thank you very much, uh, 'cause I wasn't sure, I always agreed with that. I, I went back through the list and through discussions we've had over the last couple of years. And, uh, like, my big thing right now is Mount Evergreen. We have a placeholder in there for a partnership. And I think, I think it said it was deferred to the 24th.
No, it's, it's in for 2023.
Oh, okay. But they need a lot of help out there. They, uh, I mean, they, they get little bits and pieces of grants. Uh, but they have a lot of, uh, huge capital projects that are required to keep that going. And one of these days, the 1962 lift is not, they're not gonna be able to find parts for it.
Yeah.
Um, and it's such a beautiful hill. And, uh, they've done so much work with the trails. Uh, and then there's the lighting now, and I know that we're contributing some money towards that also. So, I, I think that's our, to me, that's a gem here in, in the city. Instead of recreating more infrastructure, uh, we need to begin to look after what we have. And I, I think they really, we can play a role in that. Uh, and we don't need to use, uh, tax dollars. We can use, you know, municipal accommodation tax dollars, uh, to achieve that. So, they're gonna, they're gonna be, I'm surprised they didn't come here for a larger ask already, but I'm assuming they would come in, in the near future. And the other one, I go back to, uh, the harbor front, 'cause I know we've injected some money into, uh, like McColl Park and that. But you know what I think of all the not finishing what we've started there, you have to peruse on that. It was just, you know, when we talk about getting things done, I think we need to finish that piece off before we continue on. But I, I think we need to look at every year having, uh, and hopefully with more, uh, accommodations to tax over the coming years. You know, we'll, we'll grow that, that pot of money up. But continue the, um, whatever it is in the harbor front development and a continuation there. And I'm trying to recreate a whole bunch of new projects that we can't afford. Uh, but these are ones that we have on the books and we need help with them in any manner we can. Uh, we can't just rely on the taxpayers. And we can't continue to rely on getting funding from other levels of government for these projects, year in, year out, year in, year out. That's, you know, at some point, that's not gonna be viable anymore. So, if we need to inject some money into some of the development, I, I think that would be a great place for, uh, um, the MAD program. So, that's my, uh, I, I did too, uh, 'cause I didn't wanna create any.
Excellent, thank you. Um, one of the things that we, well, thanks for, does anyone have questions about anybody's projects that they would like to ask upon reflection? Ideas? Everyone good?
Just have one sort of comment or observation, uh, and it's to do with Councillor Bernie's suggestion. I think it's a great initiative to have the ambassador program, but I have a bit of a concern if it's, um, branded as a place for cadets or for, like, I, I'm worried that, I, I don't want it to be seen as enforcement of some kind. And I think that's something that can be a barrier in dealing with certain individuals and vulnerable segments of the, the population who can create some trouble downtown. That I'm just worried that, you know, we're, we're trying to hire people to not, you know, to be the police without being the police. Like, that's not, I think, what the intention is, and I just wanted to make that comment. I just, I really kind of concerned about, um, it being, it being seen by certain people as some type of enforcement. Well, they arrive to help tourists out, like, that's not, uh, I don't think that's our intention, like, maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, I, I think that when, uh, Roberta comes and does the presentation on the ambassador program, you'll see it's, it's basically a three-legged stool. Uh, you know, there's the tourism aspect of it, there is the, the cleaning part of it. And then there's just kind of moving people along, uh, from particular areas, uh, if there's an event going on or something. And maybe it's just as simple as being the feet on the street, saying, hey, you know, they have a relationship with Maquah or OPP. Detachment Commander Doug was very supportive of the program and, you know, said he could do walk-alongs and that sort of thing. So, I think that, uh, somewhere there's a mix there, uh, that we can, you know, work together to, to deal with some of these issues. Just kind of being, get out ahead of it rather than, you know, reacting to it. And I agree with Stace, and I agree with you as well, Councillor. I, I guess I'm saying is, yeah, Manitowoc would be a bad example, 'cause they have, they have, um, legislative authority, that they're cadets, right? So, it's totally different. But I guess what I'm ta- talking, targeting is just the maturity level, maybe? You know, like a university student, I, I said, I said sociology, doesn't have to be police foundations, but somebody that's, uh, has the maturity level to deal with, you know, those complicated, uh, um, potential, uh, situations, really, that has the level of being able to, you know, someone is, I'm thinking more like a Maquah type thing, where they're, they're good problem solving. That's all I meant, but it sounds like Stace has this figured out, so, but I, it's a point well taken, I agree with you. They're not gonna be, you know, they're not gonna be, they're not, uh, cadets or auxiliaries or, no, no. Just for everyone's benefit, can we speak to the support that we would have given to Mount Evergreen before in the past, just so that everybody's aware?
Uh, so back in 2019, uh, when it was from Christian Members, probably you remember, we offered some support to Mount Evergreen, uh, to not only develop, uh, four season destination plan. So, from Mayor Poirier's point, they are looking at becoming a four season destination and not necessarily just, uh, it is, it is a crown jewel. As well as some, uh, operating support. Um, and then, so we helped them develop that plan. We, we applied for some funding or helped them apply for some funding for that. So, they have developed the four season destination plan. And now, these are the next steps. So, the, the $50,000 contribution you see here from Mount Evergreen and, and $50,000 for Nordic, um, those are to help support their applications in for big projects. Uh, so the Nordic lighting, I think, Stace, what the, the number was on the Nordic lighting?
It's, uh, $50,000 on their overall project?
Overall project.
Oh, uh, phase one, I think, was getting, it was up there like close to a million bucks or something like that.
Yeah, so they asked for a hundred thousand dollar contribution from the city of Kenora, from municipal accommodation tax. Um, recognizing that that's a big ask in one year, we had looked at sparsing it over two years. Similar to Mount Evergreen, they're looking at doing an operation center. Um, so this is their first step into replacing that chalet. They need a place to put the, um, the groomer and do some work and things like that and have a temporary solution for the chalet. So, they're looking at applying for Fedor and then NHFC, um, and they're, they have to have a contribution to that as well. So, that was their ask. And again, this is another hundred thousand dollar ask that is being sparsed in the two years, so fifteen, fifteen, so.
Somebody put Pocket Park, and I don't remember that being discussed. I think I put that up there. And again, my keeping, my, my, uh, thinking is just as, as Mayor Poirier said about McColl Park. We talked about, about doing it. I just feel it's a priority. I'd like to, you know, I'd like to move it forward. Okay, so Megan, why don't you provide an update to everyone on Pocket Park?
Sure, so we have, uh, the detailed design work completed for the park. We've ordered the washroom, it's near completion. Um, we had gone through a competitive process to source a mural artist for that building. So, the washroom itself will be wrapped in four different mural panels, uh, which is really exciting. Um, so, uh, that is being manufactured in Quebec. It is near completion. The next steps will be for us to service the site. And then they'll come in, install the washroom, and then we'll complete the landscaping this spring. So, we had originally hoped that we would do the landscaping and the washroom install in the fall, but we were not able to find, uh, a contractor or someone to do the work, so we had to push it a little bit back. And that project is still on schedule to hopefully be completed before the spring.
And it, it, as a project, it's one of those things where we took the budget as far as we could. Here is the potential, maybe from a VAT tax perspective, to add some extra money there just in terms of the finishing, the landscaping of that. But, uh, it, it will happen for sure. And the spring, that washroom is, I think it's almost ready to be shipped right now, is it not?
Yeah, it's very, I think they're just wrapping the mural right now.
Yeah, I think we could take that space back, right? We can use that for something positive. And, and you've got the wind hat building going there across the street too, so it's a marriage of services. And, uh, there's a small office on the back of the self-cleaning washroom. And we've spoken to Maquah about maybe them, uh, using that as a office for, uh, sort of a, in the field office. Sorry, any other questions?
Just finishing up with you, Josh, so your $50,000, this is this year two of a two-year commitment?
Year one, sorry, year one.
Year, that's right.
So, you're two.
So, we're in for another 15 next year.
Yeah, so, and, um, so we know that, uh, Nordic has received their monies. Uh, it's about $100,000 over two years from the city, uh, they can match that and get 300. So, that's $400,000 towards that project. For us, it's great because it now, um, you know, that was something that you couldn't use when it was dark. Now it's gonna be lit up and their phase one is complete and they've got a broader thing. So, now they can start to do events, nighttime events and that, so it's a pretty big deal for us.
Okay, and now finishing up with Megan, that's a four-season washroom, all year round.
Yeah.
We were asked about the one with the audience about it.
Oh, yes, yeah, okay, yes. It is manufactured to withstand Canadian winters.
Yeah, and I, I don't know that it's to, uh, replace the.
No, no, wait on, no, no. But we were asked to be that one open year round, but this one we won't take care of.
Yeah, and the civilian is open year round.
Twenty-four seven.
About twenty-four seven, yeah, 'cause we don't have staff, right? So, and McColl, like, a lot of our outside washrooms are seasonal washrooms, right? Like McColl Park, that, we turn off the water. I'm just going through here to make sure. Anybody have an idea what an arts and culture master plan might cost? Remember when we did our planning session in 2018, we actually put a price for the project. I, I would say fifty to seventy-five.
No, I would say seventy-five, Stace.
Fifty to seventy-five.
Seventy-five would be enough.
Did Loaak not do a plan? I mean, it wasn't community-wide, but it was arts-wide.
I don't know. I think Loaak did one.
Yeah.
Is there, one from like 2011?
Yeah, like, was that one?
What do we say for, uh, Dr. Boat, $50,000?
Yeah.
Is that what you figured? That's what I have written on it. Do that over two years. So, um, the last thing that we're going to do is we're going to do a voting exercise. So, you have, uh, in front of you, dots. Everybody gets, uh, five votes. And, uh, if you could, uh, limit yourself to the five votes, we'll see what kind of rises to the top from a priority standpoint. Then after that, we're just gonna roll everything up and take it away. And then we'll come back to you with the melt of what we would have thought we would have done in 2023. And, um, you know, uh, the work that was, uh, done today. And sometimes what we do with these things is we push them off into subsequent years just because of budget and that sort of thing. Another big thing that we do when we evaluate these, these things is our ability to deliver. We only have a certain amount of staff time, so some of these projects, for example, the one we were just talking about, the Arts and Culture Master Plan, that's something that you would just go third-party and, and do it that way. Uh, and maybe that's something that we can start in late 2023, spread it in 2024, and then that way we can pay for the project. So, we kind of juggle with the, uh, the schedule, the calendar a little bit, also the, uh, what staff can reasonably, uh, do over the course of a period of time. So, can everybody just do a vote, please?
Are they color-coded for a reason?
No, they're not. I just, it's a blog and thing, it's just, it's just the way the package came. And take your time.
Kyle, I've been watching for a very history. Items, uh, 2.1 and 2.2 seem to be functions of economic development. So, how did we end up on the MAD, MAD tax list?
Well, MAD is economic development and tourism, and our strategy is, is under economic development and tourism together.
Right, so if you read them, they sound like functional, day-to-day.
Oh, I mean, I mean, that's one of those, uh, you can argue it's some more.
Yeah, I, I guess you could see that. I mean, we could always refine it next year.
But you may not do that, yeah, as long as they're doing that.
Yeah, yeah, I believe they are. I, yeah, sorry, I'm trying meditation.
I can read mostly from here.
I mean, we are doing some of that already. I, I think, I think some years.
Did you, did you?
We're starting to check. It's all about how, so maybe we want to just.
I know.
We can take money. Like, like, there's different ways. But I hear you. Let me revisit those again.
I, we should call, you know, we should actually call it called Eddie Bowles, since everyone who puts in municipal policies, they're members. I'm saying we should sponsor our.
Is she off today?
Ah, no, she's writing, I think mine is off.
Oh, I sent her a text as well.
Yeah, she's writing letters.
Writing letters?
Yeah. But I said you better just, uh, watch, so you can hear what your thoughts are.
Hopefully she can hear over there. I'm just not sure if Mike's picking up very clearly. I'm trying to, like, I, I'm writing, I'm writing this, 'cause I'm reading this, like, I know you're, you're writing it, so I'm like reading going, could you say hi, hi, hi?
Well, we can take that, well, that's the type of, like, actions, like, be more folksy.
For sure. No, but I, I'm just, I'm just, I put it in, then I take it out, anyway. And I made a comment here just to say, just to ensure it doesn't sound like we're just like, counsel, that's the final statement. So, I've added in some things to say.
That's why I wanted you to. What are you looking for? What?
Three more, right? So, yeah, councillor McColl, I think if we were, if we were really targeting some specific sectoral work.
Yes.
That would fall more in the 2.2 space.
Right.
Right.
Big corner, you need a bushwood.
There's more, there's more than seven dots on that card.
Gee, strategic, all the strategy.
You're not supposed to go up there and look.
We got nine councils listed.
Well, people could put more than one. All right, so, our big winners are the Black Spirit Bolt March, Mount Evergreen probably showing up in two locations, so it's, it also has lots of dots. We've got the snowmobile across downtown corridor, it's a big one, a lot of votes. Community Art and Rural Crosswalk Installation, and then the study in terms of the lift into reserve, also about a couple of votes.
That's from the influence to.
Yeah, there used to be one where the mill was, back in the day, and that's actually when the high water came, it was actually flowing over there to the river, the road washed out there. So, that's it, guys, the whole purpose of today was to just sort of tell you the planning that we would have done so far, we're going to take all of this into consideration and as part of the, when you see the operating budget, you're actually going to see what we've come up with in terms of the projects for 2043 and the associated budget and that's, and so what we want to do today.
It is your day, if you do want to talk any further on the program, we do have the time, but if you guys want to cut and go back to your day jobs.
I just have one sort of comment to make, I mean, obviously we all recognize how important this program is for economic development and lessening the burden on our local resident rate payers for assessment, I just want to be mindful of what things we can do to enhance hotels, hotel operators, what spaces, underutilized lands might be available for more hotel development, I think there's a huge need for more hotels in this community, I think that's obvious to everyone, we know this, and I think we should be mindful as municipalities in terms of whether the things that we can legitimately do is see more hotels being developed in this community.
One of the things that we would have spoken about in the past, which, when we went through the voting exercise, was a feasibility study for hotels in Canora, so that was one of the projects that was looked at and it didn't hit the list just because it was, you know, relative to going through a prioritized session, it wasn't seen as a priority at that time, so.
Is that seen as a priority?
I I think it should be a priority and we've obviously seen in the last two years of the state's emergency with fires and with pandemic and even emergencies in other communities that our hotels are used for as shelters, as emergency housing, and it really affects the supply for tourists, so, I mean, we have enough for, obviously, housing and shelters and all that stuff, but the the accommodation market is sort of under syrup here, it's it's a barrier to our development.
Stace, and I think we have talked about potentially looking at that as a component of the investment attraction project as well.
Yes, as a specific sector, absolutely. Oh, Councilor Van Belling?
Thank you, I also think it's worth putting on the radar, something that was brought up at Roma in one of the training sessions that I went to was about short-term rental registrations and it was something that, based on the panel, who was there, it's been addressed sort of once it's already become a problem within a lot of municipalities, but I think they're sort of at the point where some municipalities adopted best practice, I'd look to Prince Edward County probably as a really good resource for that, but in regards to adding to your MAP tax as a source of income, that's an opportunity there as well as other invest, or, sorry.
And that is on our radar and we're actually working on that as these.
Yeah, Planning Department has three files that they're looking at to bring forward to council, that's one of them, and so you'll see that in the next 60 days.
Go ahead.
Are air, EMDs included in that tax?
No, that's, that's exactly what, yeah, yeah, so it's, it's, it's excluded, there are municipalities that have it included and the process to collect the revenues and come back to the city are fairly similar, so, yeah.
Yeah, just on Councilor Chase's words about a couple, like, future hotels or whatever, I think we need to be mindful of the work that's already been done on, there there are a couple that, I mean, that are quite active, so before we go out and start, and I guess we can promote more, but what I'd like to see, again, if we could, is we used to get that update on a monthly, or it could be even every two months, on things like that, those types of projects, what the outreach is, what outreach has happened, kind of where we're at, where it sits in the planning.
Team Canora.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, but we don't need to call it Team Canora, just like even, like, we can call it New Assessment or whatever, I don't care, but it, it would be nice to see that, especially for the new council, because I used to find that invaluable, to get that list, because you'd forget about, you know, projects or developers or ideas that were kind of on the books and people were actually spending money to advance them, so that would be, that would be a good thing and then we can see where our shortcomings are.
No, I really appreciate that, your worship, you know what, we've, we've kind of lost that, we'll get back to it.
Yeah, and Kyle and I did have a conversation about it, I did have that meeting with Planning and Building last week, so the planning, this, we were going to come forward at council in in Cameron and give you that update.
Uh, Councilor.
Thanks, I just wanted to, and I know this has already been done and is done ongoing, but I really want to highlight the importance of when something is funded by the MAP tax, that we're communicating that really, really well, potentially including an explanation of what that means, what MAP means, because I've, like, I still spend a lot of time explaining that, a lot of the things that that you guys are doing in your programs are funded by this and it's not from from the ratepayers and so, just remains important.
So, Councilor, I'm working on an article for the minor, that'll help, and I'm actually wondering, like, you know, like, when Stephen Harper and Trudeau, they put the big signs, like, in front of, you know, like, like, should we think about something, would that be a good, is that a good plan? You know, this project is supported by.
Yes.
Yeah.
That was my plan with Evergreen and the Nordic Trails, because again, this budget has to be approved, but is to get appropriate signage and I I agree that that's what we should be doing in all cases, because you want that constant visibility to just see the impact that you're having in the community, so that's a great way to do it.
Well, you want locals to see the connection between tourism being good for our community too, that they need to have a positive relationship with tourists and communities in this community.
Yep, good point, for sure.
Is that everything?
Don't bring up another subject.
No, I'm just looking at the time, you know, so, it's good, so.
Do you have another question?
So, if there's no other questions, then I guess we can move on the agenda to adjournment.
Oh, very good, 2:15.
2:15. I'm sure everybody's.
After last week, we deserve it.